Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April 5th, 2017, public meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to call this meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those who are in attendance tonight and acknowledge that all trustees are here except for our student trustee, Haja Lee, and we are missing Director Miller and a number of our superintendents. I would like to ask for approval of the agenda, moved by trustee Gabens, seconded by trustee Gray. Is there any discussion on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously, thank you. I would like to remind everyone, if you have something that makes noise, if you could either mute it or turn it off, it would be greatly appreciated. I would also like to share that we are video voice recorded and we are transmitting out to the web, so you can wave at your family and friends at home. The Halton District School Board acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of this territory and other indigenous peoples for the use of this land in order for us to continue our work today. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to the communications to the board. And our first item is for our presentations. And it's always an exciting evening when we have our Inspire Awards and we have a number of award winners here tonight. The Inspire Award recipients have been nominated by peers, students, parents, or community organizations. These individuals and our groups are caring, innovative, and creative, and are exemplary in taking initiative to make a positive impact in the lives of our students. In this presentation, there will be four different groups of awards tonight. There are some recipients who are also not here this evening, and I'll mention them later. I would like to invite family and friends to come take photos during the presentation. So if you would like to move up a little closer when the presentation's occurring, we would like you to make sure you capture this wonderful moment. So, I'm going to invite trustee Reynolds up to make our first presentation. Tonight, trustee Reynolds will be presenting an Inspire Award to the St. Matthew's Anglican Church Outreach. And if you'd like to come on up. Through a partnership between Aldershot Elementary School and St. Matthew's Anglican Church in Aldershot, an after-school program for the grade seven and eight students has been in place since 2015. Aldershot students walk over to St. Matthew's after-school, have a healthy snack, and then they're instructed on how to prepare a meal. They wash, chop, mix, blend, and cook. And they do this for six weeks, and at the end of the final week, they invite their families to eat with them. This is currently the ninth time holding this unique outreach program called the Youth Kitchen. We are especially grateful to the dedication of Connie Price for sourcing sponsorship opportunities and to the St. Matthew's Church volunteers, John Creary, Janet Graham, and Blair Henderson. This award is presented again to the entire St. Matthew's congregation. And we thank you for the congregation's generous support of the Youth Kitchen program. Congratulations, and thank you very much for all that you do for our students. Come on up if you would like to take some pictures. If you could just stay here over to this side, that'd be great. Thank you very much. To present our next Inspire Award, could I invite up trustee L. Harrison? This Inspire Award will be going to Andrew Thies and Sandra DeBrue, the music teachers from WH Morton. If you'd like to come up, please. In June of last year, the music teachers at WH Morton approached the staff with an innovative idea. To further develop the music program, they proposed the school library be exchanged with the music room to team teach two classes of music together in the larger space. The team felt there'd be many benefits to creating this new Performing Arts Center. Students would play in a band setting, gaining a more authentic orchestra experience. Students from the two programs, Regular Stream and Gifted, would have classes together, allowing for increased collaboration within the two groups. And team teaching provides opportunities for teacher collaboration and individual student instruction. After five months with the new setup, administrators report seeing increased student engagement, decreased behavior issues, and an increased level of performance and passion for music. The music teachers have renewed energy and are moving to the music program to new heights. The Performing Arts Center at WH Morton is now the center of the school, allowing more staff and students and guests to appreciate our band, drum line, choir, and music programs. The music staff deserves this recognition for this innovative idea that has improved the students' experience at Morton. Congratulations and thank you for inspiring our students. Thank you. So if you could just move over to this side as well, thank you. We want to get a group shot after. So trustee L. Harrison is going to make the next presentation, and I'd like to invite up Brian Vincent, the music department head at TA Blake Lock High School. As the head of the music department at TA Blake Lock for the last 10 years, Brian Vincent has inspired hundreds of students with his passion for music and ability to encourage his students to strive to do their very best. He sets high expectations and standards for performance and demonstrates this through his diligent work ethic. With hard work, we can achieve this together. To Brian, it doesn't matter if a student is a virtual ossol on their instrument or struggling to figure out notes and figure placement. Instead, he values the achievement and hard work that is demonstrated in improving and getting better. Teamwork and collaboration are also skills that he encourages students to develop, that sense of community where everyone in the class or band works together towards their common goal, knowing they only achieve success by working as a team. Blake Lock's concert fans have competed in many regional and national competitions under Brian's guidance, and he has traveled extensively with his students. During the past four years, he has developed a network of parents, the Association of Music Parents, who have given themselves to take the initiative to go out and do fundraising to ensure all students are able to participate, regardless of economic background. And of course, Brian makes music fun. With Brian's support, the students have learned they can do anything and take on anything. This is the value of music education, the value that Brian Vincent brings to his job every day. Thank you, Brian, for being such an inspiration to the students. I'd like to invite trustee Harvey Hope up, please. Trustee Harvey Hope will be awarding an Inspire Award to Natalie Howard, a teacher from New Central Public School. Natalie, why not? Natalie Howard, a grade three teacher at New Central Public School, was nominated by a parent who is grateful for the support her son is receiving to support his special needs. According to the nomination, Mrs. Howard involved the school team when he entered grade three, recognizing his special needs. She supported him through a psychoeducational assessment, speech therapy, and occupational therapy. But beyond that, she was able to connect with my eight-year-old boy like no other teacher had before. She not only inspired him to do his very best, but she rebuilt his self-esteem. He now tells me how smart he is. He went from not wanting to read to reading daily about science, and he is trying his best with his struggle with writing. He does all this because he doesn't want to let Ms. Howard down. In fact, he constantly tells me how he wishes he would be his teacher for next year as well. He has never asked for the same teacher before. My son is a work in progress, still has a long road ahead of him, but Mrs. Howard lit the fire under him to start learning. She rebuilt his self-esteem and has inspired him to be the very best he can be, whatever that may be. Mrs. Howard, on behalf of all of us, we'd like to thank you for being such an inspiration to this young man. Congratulations. Just a minute, David. Just a minute. Before we have the group picture, I just want to acknowledge there were other other parents who were nominated this, or other people who were nominated this year, and I just want to read their names. We had Andre Blizard, who is a teacher from Sunningdale. Sorry. Meredith Greenwich, who is another music teacher from WH Morton. Jeff Chassault and Robert Hamilton, administrators at Robert Baldwin. Janine Maxwell, a volunteer at Montclair. Craig McKay, a volunteer at Alexander Public School. Jennifer Wallace, a volunteer at Joseph Gibbons. Julia Grul, a volunteer at Sam Sherrett. And Stacy Budgeal, a staff member EA at Abbey Lane. And they will all be receiving their EA awards at their place of work. But I'd like, or Inspire, sorry, Inspire Awards. But we'd like to congratulate everyone on being such an inspiration to the students of our system. Thank you. We'll wait for everyone to exit because I'm guessing they don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. But congratulations again to everyone, and thank you for being such an inspiration to our students. It inspires us as well. So we have a second presentation. And it's school ground greening, and I'd like to invite Suzanne Burwell and Jerry, or sorry, Superintendent Cullen, up. And if you can refer to report 17051, which is 4.2.4 under your information items. Thank you very much.
Sure you, Chair Amos. My only duty, as far as this report and presentation goes, is to introduce someone you already know, Suzanne Burwell, our environmental sustainability coordinator. And she has put together a wonderful summary of what she's been doing. This is like what I did on my summer holidays, this is what she did all this year. So I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne and leave things with her. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take you on a brief, quick tour of school ground greening and outdoor learning areas that have been constructed in the board over the past few years. Not just this year, but since this is the first annual report, we thought we'd look at a few things that have been done. Why? Why move away from this? When we first start looking at the, our schools, we have to recognize that the outside space is as much a resource for learning as the inside space. But we have to make it welcoming, we have to make it accessible to everyone for, as a learning space. Unfortunately, we've paved a lot of our spaces. We're not alone in this. We've tried to make them active spaces with basketball nets and foursquare. I was going to say, I think there's a map of Canada up there as well. So how do we get away, how do we make effective use of this resource? Why do we have to do it? Well, we know that how we design our outside spaces will either enhance or hinder the physical activity that our students have. We know that our students live in a world where they're inside a lot, not just at school, but at home. We know that there's cognitive benefits to being outside. Creativity, curiosity, problem-solving ability all increase with access to nature. We know that nature makes you nicer. Apparently, going for a walk makes you happier. Happiness in motion. That could apply for the walk to school too, but we're not talking about that today. We also look at how landscape influences child development. Building the environmental knowledge of our kids has a lot of benefits as well. As we build that stewardship ethic, how they understand how our world is really a systems. We need that systems thinking so they understand their connection to the real, to the natural world. A lot of other academic and learning goals are also achieved. But what happens when we're outside? Well, our summers are getting hotter, our springs are getting warmer, our falls are getting warmer. Jerry can tell you that. As we look at the air conditioning that goes on, we seem to go from air conditioning to heating and back to air conditioning with no shoulder seasons anymore. When we look at the spaces that our students are on, the temperatures get pretty hot. Soon as the air gets warm, everything else heats up. When you're looking at the asphalt, it gets pretty hot. Astroturf is actually hotter. Grass is probably the best place to be, unless you're in water, but we try not to provide swimming pools in the outside. And our youngest space people, they're the ones closest to those hot surfaces. When we ask our students and our staff what is important to them, when we talk about making the most effective use of our outside spaces, they'll tell you they need shade, they need active space, but they also need a quiet space. They need access to the natural environment. And really, they prefer for it not to be behind a fence. We work with program needs and wants. And I say program needs and wants because when we ask the smallest students what they want, sometimes this is what we get, which isn't very practical, but might be a lot of fun. We really try to promote that this is a collaborative process. We work with parent councils, we work with staff, admin, facility services, we work with community groups to develop a plan. When we go through, we implement the plan, we go back and we have a look. What worked, what didn't, how can we move forward? And a lot of times, we find in that assessment, what the schools are saying is, what's next? How can we go from here? I've got a community garden, I need an outside seating space, I need something else. When we ask kids what they want to do, a lot of times we get, they want to dig, they want to build, especially our youngest ones. So if they don't have a place to dig and build, they'll make one. What happens when I dig under that grass? How far down can I go? Really, can you dig all the way to China? But that has negative impacts. So why not give them a space where they can actually explore and build and work together so that they're learning outside? Thought I'd take you on a brief before-and-after set of pictures. Most of these have a concept plan that's drawn by a landscape architect on the bottom. So you can see, we start with what we go through and what we end up with. We want our smallest people to be safe. We create a fence that has a controlled entry. However, perhaps the asphalt is not the most welcoming of spaces. There's little shade. There's not a variety of surfaces. It doesn't promote active play in a controlled manner. If you've been to one of these, long areas, 50, 60 students in the space at one time with no direction, they go in all directions. I want to play ball, I want to ride a bike, I want to run. So creating these spaces where they have, there's a flow. We create a flow so that they move around. This picture on the right is actually the site, it's still under construction. But there's lots of spaces where they can experience nature, where there's learning spots for them. And there's different things to do. Some of the spaces are big, some of them are smaller, it depends on the school. No two footprints are exactly the same. Sometimes we get the call, Suzanne, can you come help us? We have a problem with drainage, with erosion. So we try to solve those problems at the same time as creating an innovative space for the students that promotes learning, promotes physical activity. The footprints of our school seem to be getting smaller, but we have to be more creative with them. The schools are bigger, we have lots of students. We want those other students to still have access to space, how do we break it up? So sometimes we're creative. Look at the side of the school, put a fence up, draw a design. And you have a creative learning space. This particular learning space, it goes inside, outside. Kids design something inside, they build it outside. They see what's happening outside, they take it inside. And as you can see, they actually go outside when it's cold. It's not just a recess space, it's a learning space. A lot of the times, another request is not just shade, but in the winter, windbreak. If you've got a wide-open field, that wind can come whipping across it pretty good. So putting in places, types of trees that create windbreak, shade, again, promoting physical activity and a variety of activities for the students in the space. Some have a nicer natural environment just outside the fence, some of them don't. The biggest request that we get from some of our bigger schools in the outside area is shade. We need shade. We need a place to sit, and we need some shade. Trees will provide shade, but they take years to grow. So we're mixing in a little bit of artificial shade at this point in time. Helps to meet the need while we give the trees the chance to grow. Some places, we actually have the shade, so we build where the shade is. A lot of times, our schools will come to us and say, we need a plan. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, we understand that. We've got a two, three, four, five-year plan. And we start small, and we move forward, and we do it right. We build something, and we look how we incorporate it into the school life. Phase two for this is coming soon. Phase two is the trees around the side to provide the shade. Same thing happening a few kilometers away in another municipality. This particular school, when I went to it, I was astounded that there was no trees in the back. I'm not quite sure why. We've added, I think, eight or nine now, dealt with drainage problems, and they're putting in phase two as we, within the next couple of weeks as well. We try to use a variety of materials and address making the spaces usable in all types of weather. Trying to create those spaces where students can sit in different groups in their learning, be reflective on their own, or in a large group environment. Making use, again, of natural shade that's available. What's, if there's a hill, we build into the hill. A lot of times, you'll go to schools and you'll see that they've got either pavers or bricks that have been engraved. And this leads us to, how are we doing all this? Well, the FDK spaces were supported in part by bore funds through Scott Superintendent Padra Barak and Superintendent Zodeveld, but not entirely. Schools raise funds as they can through pizza, fun fairs, engraved bricks. They read a lot of applications to grant, for grants. Sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. Every once in a while, we get a little gift. This year, we got about $16,000 from the Ministry of Education for Ontario 150 funding. And we'll be using that to enhance school playgrounds across the board. And I just wanted to go over that. We understand that schools want to do things, and we're trying to help them do it properly. So we engage the services of a landscape architect. We have them go through and approve where the site, where their project is going by facility services, who know things like portables, fire routes, snow piling. We make sure that they follow the admin procedures for purchasing. We've given, developed a list of trees that are salt, drought, and compaction resistant. I say resistant because nothing is going to stand up to everything, as we saw last summer. And we promote that stewardship ethic. We ask them to tie it into the school. Those trees need water, water, and more water, especially in the climate that we're now experiencing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've come a long way. And thank you for all of your efforts to make it happen because I remember when the playgrounds were very utilitarian and were not very nature-oriented. And now that we have outdoor classrooms and these type of play areas, we, we are making huge progress. I do believe you have a couple of people who would like either questions or comments. So trustee Danielle.
Thank you. That is so cool to see, and kudos on the use of the Lorax image. Thought that fit in perfectly. It's, it is so exciting for me to see this because I remember back when I was a school council chair and Al Grayson was superintendent of my family of schools. He talked about when he was a teacher, he would take the kids outside and they would have a hula hoop. And they had to put the hoop on the ground, they could put it anywhere on the grounds that they wanted. And then they had to write and describe everything that they found in the hoop and just how much learning that was, to just see how far we've come from the hula hoop to some of those designs there. Absolute blows me away, and I just want to say congratulations. That's absolutely fabulous work.
Thank you. Although we still do use the hula hoops for our micro hikes when we can't get out past the schoolyard. Nearby nature is an amazing thing.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you for your report, Suzanne, and thank you for the use of pictures. I love seeing the work that you do, and I'm so grateful for the work that you and your department does. It's terrific. My son's school is fortunate in that it backs onto the town of Oakville Green Space. So there's lots of green space and shade and trees. But as we've seen in the pictures, many schools are not so lucky. So thank you so much for, for doing the work that you do.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much through the chair. I would echo the comments of my colleague trustees, but I have maybe a couple of questions. I'm always concerned when I drive by a school, maybe it be a new school or one who's recently undergone a renovation of a landscaping variety. And the care of the plants has not been able to be followed through or that there seems to be a lot of plants that just don't survive. And I think the conditions are horrific for our new plants that go in, say, in the spring and then have to tough it out through the summer if no one's actually taking care of them. So I guess my question is, is are we in any way redefining the role of our summer staff to take care of the new plantings? Or are we asking our community to take a role in that? Or I guess my last question is, are we being careful to use native species that might be more drought-resistant?
Oh, look who snuck back to the table. This one relates more to the staffing issue, so I'll take it off Suzanne's. Actually, having Suzanne part of our department now really has helped us in that regard. And as we move forward with the new school designs, it is an item we've been identifying over the years. The architects and the landscapers and the approval process that we run through seems to focus on the bigger issues at the time and not so much on the ongoing. So we're trying to draw them down into that. We've had a lot of really good input from, from both Suzanne and the landscape consultant around the drought-resistant and those plants or those plantings and types that can really survive under some of those conditions. And in some cases, to reduce the overall size. Sometimes they're just too aggressive around how big the area is. We've got a number of different things that have been done recently. One is, yes, we are going to start having more focus by our own staff on the outside. That is an initiative that we've identified as a result of some of our students. That is an initiative that we've identified as a result of some of the new sites in particular. And we've got a number of sites where the schools actually take that on. There's a, there's a real interest both, I think during the school year from a student or a teacher perspective, but there's also some community members that really want to see that carry on. And the summers are a challenge for us and we don't have all of the resources available. So I would say yes, on a number of fronts, that we are trying to really focus on, on trying to do a better job on that particular aspect of seeing the plantings that are there survive and thrive.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. There's lots of good work going on out there. I was wondering whether you would say that the greening projects are spread throughout the board? Or if there's areas, geographic areas that are still coming along in that regard? And then secondly, related, is there a listing or photo gallery of any of these projects? So people can, you know, see what inspires them?
In terms of across the board, the size of the project is, is dependent on the school. You'll notice that there was no food gardens that I illustrated because I didn't have any pictures. Right now, I know about them. I know where they are. Some of them are at secondary schools. Some of them are at elementary schools. Some of them have pollinator gardens, which are much more interesting when everything is in bloom as opposed to now. So in terms of where things are not happening. I'd be hard pressed to come up with any particular school, even not just an area, but even a school that has not got something going on where the kids are outside. Every single school that has full day kindergarten has been touched by the board in some way, shape or form in their outside space. Most of the elementary schools have done something. And I would say a good percentage of the secondary schools as well in the recent years. Some of our schools have projects that date back 10, 11 years. I think Acer plantings at some of the schools in Oakville that have been going on for a long time. So it really depends on the staff. In terms of pictures, I like to take pictures. I have thousands of pictures before construction, after construction. They're all on the cloud. That's just where I store them and I pull them out. So obviously here where you may see one picture of a school, I've probably got 25. Some of them are very detailed. Some of them are, oh, that's an issue. We need to go back and fix that. A corner of a stone hasn't been ground down. Not so interesting. I'm measuring the height to make sure that we're conforming to the specifications that we've given our contractors. Sometimes it's a fence. So not all of them are so interesting. But they certainly are there. I'm just not quite sure how to make them available.
The other item, if I can add to that, that's really good for making suggestions to schools is the greening guideline. So Suzanne and the consultant that we've been working with put together a very easy to use and detailed document that is posted. So it actually is available for both schools and the public for that matter to access. And it's the greening guideline. I found it to be a very, very useful tool.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I really look forward to seeing this fleshed out. And I wondered if we could have the PowerPoint shared, if that's possible, to look at some of those pictures again. And I do notice that the difference in especially the shade structures, that helps a lot in certain schools that are going to take, in order to build the school, they have to tear down the tree that needed to be there to create the shade. So you're sort of getting back to, to the shade that was there to start with. Also, I know that the effect that being outside is good on people. I remember in university, us trying to talk our prof into having a lecture on the steps of the school in order to get outside. So that was a long time ago. Wondering if I could ask a question about the report that is attached to this presentation now? And wondered about the school plans, schools plan and implement projects that respect the rights and responsibilities of HDSB staff. And I wasn't too sure what that point was trying to touch on. It's the bottom of page 31 of the thing. That may be the custodian slash community versus gardening club versus whatever. And I wasn't, I think that's where that was going and I think you just touched on that. But I did notice that in some schools, like EJ had a longstanding summer watering program. And I know other schools have tried it on and off. But again, I guess I think that's where we're aiming at. I thought I'd ask the question.
When we wrote the admin procedure for school ground greening, we wanted to make sure that we were being respectful of others' responsibilities. Another line in that admin procedure was that, you know, we had to make sure that we were being respectful of our reciprocal agreements with our municipalities. Sometimes it's hard to tell what's school property and what's municipal property when you first look at it. So we have to make sure generally, and I say generally because there are exceptions, that when we build a project, it is on school property, not municipal property. But not always because we do have some agreements with municipalities for community gardens. But it was more of a, we wanted a school community to be involved rather than have a project that was the idea of one person or one group at one point in time who said, great, now somebody else takes care of it and by I'm gone for the summer. So that's what we were trying to do. And yes, some communities do take it on and we do have some, some staff, Facility Services staff who love to be involved as well.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers. I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight and sharing all this wonderful information and those wonderful pictures about all the fantastic things that are happening at our schools. And thank you for all your efforts.
All right. So we'll now move on to, we do not have any delegations. So we'll move on to the action items for tonight. Our first item would be the minutes of the regular board meeting from March the 22nd, 2017 on page two of your board package. Is there any, can I have a mover? Trustee Papin, seconded by. Trustee Harvey Hope. Any discussion on the minutes? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes, I had forwarded a couple of housekeeping items to Ms. Gorbaker, but one of the items is related to the school year calendar. My request that the, to add a comment about the beginning and ending of the winter break, specifically the Friday and the Monday that the director had agreed to didn't get captured in the minutes. So.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions about the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is any business transacted in private session. I believe there is an item.
Yes, there are two. The first is a property matter. Report 17046. And I so move.
Are you on, did you, oh, so okay. Seconding, okay, thank you. I hadn't got there. Okay. So moved by Vice Chair Graves, seconded by Trustee Collard. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. You have another item?
I do. Also, property matter. Report 17047. And I so move.
Seconded by Trustee Papin. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Any other items?
That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we'll now move on to the order paper. Is there any comments or questions regarding the order paper tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the action items. First item is the school year calendar. Associate Director Boe, report 17039 on page 12 of your board package. Associate Director Boe.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This report is, is back after it was first presented a couple of weeks ago. A little bit of new information for trustees. It's my understanding that last night, the, our co-terminus board passed their calendar, which is aligned with, with our calendar as it sits right now. I just wanted also to draw your attention to the couple of pages at your station there. Those, these are the things that typically go out with the news release. They go out electronically. And then the visual calendar, the one on legal size paper actually gets printed in hard copy and distributed late in August. They're not part of the report, but I just, we thought we'd share those with trustees so that you see what goes out. I know trustee Harvey Hope had made a suggestion at the last meeting about adding a couple of things to the, to the timeline. And I just want to be clear that the, the dates that are in the report are more for the report so that we can demonstrate that we're compliant around the regulation, that sort of thing. These two pages are what would be more parent friendly and would go home. We didn't add, and are happy to do that. We didn't add the suggestion of putting the last day of class before Christmas and the first day back after the Christmas break, just because we started to think that this page was getting very busy looking, but we can certainly put those in.
Thank you. I'll put the motion on the floor and then we'll have some discussion. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the summary of statutory and board designated holidays and professional activity days for the 2017, 2018 as recommended through consultation with the school year calendar committee. Moved by. Trustee Grabent, seconded by trustee Oliver. Discussion. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you. And I know a lot of work goes into this. And I just wanted to comment from an equity and diversity standpoint. We did have a concern raised to us with the September dates in that the PA day, the concern for this particular parent is moving the PA day to the Monday, September 25th, given that her children will be off school the Thursday and the Friday before for Rosh Hashanah, I believe it is. And so that the concern was raised as to why it was moved to the Monday. And I did say that I would seek out an answer. And the same parent also expressed concern with February being such a short month and having two PA days as well as a stat holiday in it. So I just told her that I would raise that at the table and find out what the reasoning was behind those.
Thanks trustee Danielle. Through the chair to trustees. We, we certainly had some discussion around that later date in September and we went back and forth from the beginning of September. Should we have it first thing at the beginning, either before or right after Labor Day? Where we were landing was later in September and actually debated the fact that we were going to select September 22nd actually as a date, which was Rosh Hashanah. And so looking at whether, you know, it's better to have that on a day when some of our kids are off or whether to have it on the date when some of our staff are off. And, and we felt that, I think some of the conversation was around, we can get our kids caught up if they've missed a date, but it's more difficult to get our staff caught up on if there's required or mandatory learning to take place. And so we landed on the 25th. The February date, in fact, any of the other dates, it became really difficult as we looked at the calendar because we have one extra PA day this year and next year. We're up to seven now. To find a month where we're not, where we haven't got PA days that are relatively close together. And we thought that families like to have their PA day attached to a long weekend where possible. Sometimes that provides an opportunity for families. So that's where it landed next to the family day. The other PA day in February typically is always in that same spot because that's that semester turnaround for our secondary schools. So some options that we looked at, we looked at, you know, could we have it before March break again? And there was some debate whether that was better or, or whether the February family day. And that's sort of where folks land.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you very much. And some of the feedback that I received is similar on the, the topic of September 25th and those February dates and just somehow expressed concern of the proximity of PA days for, for parents who might struggle to, to find care and pay for care for days that are so close. And yeah, I don't think we can, can make any changes to this one. And I recognize now, seeing how it's laid out in the purple, that there's not a lot of choice in, in getting those PA days spread apart. But absolutely something to think about. It's also brought to my attention that a Monday PA day is something that doesn't happen very often. So perhaps the communication around those early on would, would be great so that nobody is caught off guard by, by that one little anomaly.
Yeah. And thanks for that feedback. We tried to put a little asterisk to note it on here, but we will include that in our center mail messaging as well. Last year, it was about the PA day right at the beginning of the school year, which was a bit of a change, which we tried to highlight. But this will be a change for families, so we'll, we'll do some separate messaging as well.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I wanted to mention that the first day back was actually added to this list, but what is missing is the last day of December, the schooling in December. One of the other things that might be useful if we're talking about this calendar is we used to have the early dismissal days highlighted because PA days often have childcare organizations sort of a heads up. I know I passed my arena, I will say PA day, hockey day, camp or whatever. But the early dismissal days of the hour and a half, which are due to contractual reasonings, that is even more problematic for parents. And so having kind of a, since we already have the calendar, perhaps if we could come up with another highlighting, again, that 22nd of December is not only the last day, but it's also an early, an early day. And that, that being that highlighting, you know, in effect, look for purple and, look for purple and whatever that other color is for, oh, childcare issues. So to, to go on top of what trustee Danielle and trustee Graves said about the Mondays unusual, let's make sure people realize it. But also from a parent, I always found the early release days to be the most problematic because no matter what childcare arrangements you had in place, that one was probably going to be the issue.
Let me take that back.
Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. I'm curious if consideration was given to you taking one of the February PA days and putting it on either the Friday before the Christmas break or the Monday, or sorry, the Friday before the Victoria Day weekend in May.
Three, Madam Chair, to trustee Oliver. I'm just thinking about the conversation now. I think, I think there was some conversation around May, again, attaching it to a long weekend. The later in the school year we get, the less useful sometimes that PA. I mean, no day is not useful, but we tried to, we think earlier is, tends to be better so that you can apply that learning right away. I'm not, I'm not sure we looked at December, only because it tends to be a shorter month as it is with, with the holiday there. I don't, I don't think that that was considered by the committee.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I'm always appreciative of the work that goes into creating the calendar. And I don't think that the, generally the public is aware of how many factors are involved with creating the calendar and the fact that you've been able to match this up with what our co-terminus board is offering is, is a really huge benefit in terms of transportation and coordinating schedules because some families have children in both boards. So I congratulate you on the work that you've done again this year.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers.
all those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you through you, Associate Director Boog, to the whole committee, which I believe trustee Gerbent was also on, and there was a number of superintendents, for all the hard work, for all the people that was from across the system that went into it, because I know that it's not an easy puzzle to put together, especially when you have to coordinate with our co-terminus board and to make everything along. So thank you. All right, so our next item is the Audit Committee Report. Trustee Gray, report 17044 revised on page 16 of your board package. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much through the chair. This report came to the board about two weeks ago, and essentially it outlines the recommendation of the Audit Committee to have Deloitte continue, or rather, conduct the audit of the 2016-2017 financial statement. And trustees were able to review that report two weeks ago, so I would be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion on the floor. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board authorized the appointment of the external audit firm, Deloitte LLP, to perform the annual financial statement audit of the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So we're now up to communication to the board, and the highlight of the evening, our student trustee reports. Trustee Metropolansky.
Thank you. Firstly, I just want to pass on Zaid's regrets. He has strep throat, so unfortunately he can't be here today. A couple of things to report on. The major thing is that our last Senate meeting was on Tuesday, March 28th. The next one is April 17th, which is a Monday. It's unusual for us. It's also Easter Monday, but we didn't really have much of a choice for scheduling in April, so it's happening then. We've informed all of our state senators. In terms of the last Senate meeting, so the first part of the meeting was planning our Halton Youth Leadership Symposium, the HYLS. We've got the date, May 19th, confirmed by Sheridan just today. We just need to figure out that the rooms will meet our capacity before we proceed with that. The second part of the meeting was collecting feedback from students about issues going on in their school or in their boards. There were a couple of issues that came up. The first thing that I just want to note is, I know a couple of weeks ago, we reported some issues, we passed on some issues with busing to Associate Director Boog, and we're happy to say that the students have gone back to us and have said that most of those issues have been resolved, the buses aren't late anymore. There's still a couple that I promised, but I'll pass that information on to you. The second of all, the previous board meeting, there was a report done, and IEPs were mentioned in that report, and it was said that the IEPs are being looked at by the board, and if there are any changes that need to be made to those. We brought that up to our Senate, and we got a lot of feedback from our secondary senators, so I'd love to pass that on to anyone responsible for that, information about IEPs. Thirdly, a lot of the senators had questions about specific issues, so they just have questions about how things work within the board. Those questions ranged from issues including concussion protocol to the food options available in their schools, to the cafeteria, to maintenance in schools, to allocation of money within departments within schools. So we'll be following up with Associate Director Boog and superintendents to get back to students on the answers to those questions for those issues. In terms of more specific issues that students had, there were two major ones. The first was teachers and both, sorry, students in both secondary and elementary felt that they really liked the move that the board is making towards including innovation in the classrooms, so having more technology in the classrooms. They just felt that there needs to be more professional development for teachers, is what they're experiencing for using technology. We can also follow up with anyone responsible for this to address their concerns more specifically. And the second issue was, the elementary senators expressed, most of them are taking, they're taking French, a lot of them are taking French immersion, that they felt that their grade eight French isn't properly addressing them, their needs for when they're going to be taking French in grade nine. And we followed up with the grade nine senators, who said also that they felt that they were having difficulties in French in high school. The transition from grade eight French to grade nine French was difficult for them. We can also follow up with that concern where appropriate. That's what we have from Senate. The only other thing to note from us is, we'll be bringing up a report soon, later on during the meeting, about changing the waiting for our upcoming student trustee election, which we talked about at the previous board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. There is a comment or question for you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you, trustee Metropolansky, for your report. I always love hearing what you bring to the board from the student senators. There's always a wealth of information that the superintendents can take away and work with. Through you, Chair, to Associate Director Boog, the piece around grade eight French, I'm wondering if that's something that we could add to the agenda for the French Advisory Committee to look at.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Oliver. Absolutely, we could certainly talk about that. I'd want to dig into that a little bit more with our student senate as well, to find out what those issues are, and maybe involve Superintendent Salmini, but maybe we can put that on an upcoming agenda, for sure.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Papin.
Also, thank you for your great report. I also wanted to mention that while I was at the Student Trustee Conference in Ottawa, I met a student from Oakville-Trevogur named Hunter McKinnon, and I forwarded the information on to trustee Metropolansky, and he was able to attend the meeting on March 28th and emailed me to say how happy he was, and he thought he had met a lot of great people, and he was really interested in belonging to such a great organization. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers or questions, thank you very much for your report, and I know it's going to be busy for the next couple of months, but will you email the date of your conference and your other meetings to trustees to remind them when those dates are? That'd be great. Thank you very much, trustee Metropolansky. Okay, so our next item is information items. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we'll now move to our action items for April 19th in two weeks. And the first item is the Student Trustee Elections Policy Exemption. Trustees Metropolansky, Haji Lee, Daniele, and Papin, report 17045 on page 18 of your board package. Trustee Metropolansky.
Thank you. So this is what we talked about at the previous board meeting. The major change that we're looking at is creating equal waiting for elementary and secondary students in the upcoming student trustee election. So it was previously a four-to-one ratio where secondary votes were weighted four times more heavily than elementary votes. Sorry, we felt that that was unfair, and we thought that the two groups should have an equal voice. We brought this up at the last meeting, and the feedback that we heard from the board was, this is an exception to the policy, this is a quick process that we're doing, we're circumventing the usual timeline of leaving it open to the public to comment. And you guys requested that we bring it up to our Senate to see if there's any feedback from them. The response that we got from elementary senators was, they were so happy, they were particularly touched that it would be created equally this year. Secondary students had no objection to it either, they felt that it was a fair move. One particularly poignant moment for me was, when we announced this to the Senate, an elementary senator said, "So we matter this year." And that was just really impactful for me. So I understand that this is a change that we're making, and it's an abrupt change and one that doesn't really follow the policy, but we would really appreciate your support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to hear the feedback from the student senate. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. I'm just curious if you or your trustee mentors happen to know what the original rationale would have been for having that weight differential? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. That came about because, quite frankly, when I began as a trustee in 2006, there were no elementary, there was no elementary representation at student senate. I believe that came in in 2008 or 2009. They began to reach out to the elementary schools and take up from the elementary schools. It wasn't quick. It took a while to bring on. The elementary, it's grown over the years, so the concern was because there are so many more elementary schools than there are secondary schools. They were concerned about the sudden influx of elementary schools taking over the student senate, when it had traditionally been a secondary school program or some work that they participated in. So it was instituted gradually, but now that there are enough, it's been changing over the years. So this is just one piece of the evolution.
Can you leave trustee Collard has something to add?
Yes. When the change was made to make it a four-to-one waiting, part of what went into that thinking was that there are approximately four times as many elementary schools as secondary schools, and that the elementary schools eventually attend the secondary schools. So it wasn't meant to be an unevenness, because the secondary schools typically have a larger student body. It was thought more of leveling than making it uneven. But I am very pleased to hear that the students support this change.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. Just so that we're clear on this, you're looking for a one-time exemption, and that will, and then that will be taken into consideration when the policy is considered with the other changes that you are proposing. And may I ask when your election date is?
So for the first part of the question, yes, it's absolutely, we're looking for just the one-time exception, and then the date of the election is April 25th.
Follow-up, please.
Given that the date of the election is six days after this, and you do need to get word out to your senators, would it be apropos to make a motion to waive the rules and deal with this tonight? Do you think, do you think it's urgent enough to deal with tonight, or can it wait till the 19th?
I think it has to be tonight, so that we can inform people as soon as possible.
Thank you. Then I would like to make a motion to waive the rules, please. Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Oliver, you will get to speak to, well, is there some, there's some people who want to speak to the actual motion before we just... We can actually waive the rules and then still have the discussion on the actual motion, right? Okay, I didn't see your hand up, so I don't remember. All right, trustee Papin. Moved by trustee Daniele, seconded by trustee Papin. Any other, is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of waiving the rules on this motion? And that passes unanimously. So now we will go back to the motion. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I too also think we should be voting on this tonight, so I'm glad we are going to. One, my question was, from what I remember, since I've been through a few of these student election processes now, is that it is, and from what I asked student trustee Haji Lee the last time, was, we're not doing the proxy or vote off-site type stuff this time, so we are still talking about who shows up in the room, and so it will be, everybody in the room will have equal voting, and so if the elementaries, that there are more of them than there are students secondary, if they want to use that waiting, they're going to have to show up to have elementary outweigh secondary. So if you, if the concern that they were talking about the leveling and whether or not the elementary senators were showing up or not, would be, only really works in this particular instance if they all show up. Right? So that's again, another carrot, so to speak. If you want your voice heard, you will get, just by showing up, you will have your voice heard better than in the past, right? Am I getting that right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you through your chair to our student trustee. I was just wondering when you expect the policy might come back. I assume you would do the vote, see how it goes, reflect, and then would it come back before the end of this year, or are we talking fall, do you think?
Yeah, we hope it would come back, yeah, for the end of this year. Yeah, that'd be ideal.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers to this, I'm going to put the motion on the table.
Point of vote, Madam Chair, is co-mentors. I wondered if trustee Papin could move it and I could second it, please? Maybe you put it on the floor?
I think I could arrange that. Or maybe I'll look this way. No. You already do, don't you?
Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approve an exemption to the student trustee policy for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year, equalizing the waiting criteria for elementary and secondary schools as it pertains to the student trustee elections. Moved by trustee Papin, seconded by trustee Daniele. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, so now you can inform your student senate. Congratulations. And we look forward to the updated policy when it is totally done. Okay, our next item is the feedback, read directors' job description and executive limitations and delegation of authority policies. Director Miller, who's not here, so Associate Director Boog, report 17048 on page 19 of your board package. Associate Director Boog.
Through you, Madam Chair, I don't really have any comments. Trustees have read the report, and I would do my best to answer any questions, but I can't guarantee anything.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. And I think that unfortunately, most of my comments will probably need to be forwarded to Director Miller. But I'm wondering whether, because this is one of, yes, and I said this at the time that we had the posting on to the thing, is that I had input that I did not have a chance to have integrated into this before it was posted, and so that I would bring it back at the time. Now we're into a situation where the difference between now and two weeks from now also is losing quite a number of days due to the holiday. Therefore, it's almost impossible to get anything, because we're going to have packages out to us even sooner, that kind of thing. And wondered whether or not, because this is one of the most important policies that we probably have, which is the job description of the head of the firm, so to speak, that it warrants a slightly more fulsome discussion at this time. Not at this time, but at this point, so that we could maybe have a discussion at committee of the whole, or something along those lines. At a minimum, I would like to at least discuss it with the director, or anyone else who'd like to have that conversation. There are some wording issues, nothing substantive, but there's some wording issues where, because we've changed the wording from what it was, and yes, maybe, yes, we've done it the way we've done it for years, and nobody's looked at the wording a long time, but when you go about it and you look at it again, there are words that are not defined, and therefore I have queries about, well, kind of, what do you mean? Things like appropriate, or satisfactory, or who decides some of these things, and it's sort of left open. And I just would like a chance to point some of these out and say, is this what we mean? And I don't exactly know how to get to that point. Again, because it was raised and practically posted, it was a very small sort of window in January when I was not here, I didn't get a chance to have feedback at that point. Also, with all due respect, our director is going to be busy between now and April 21st, writing a different kind of report, and I don't really want to put this on him between now and then. So I'm wondering if there's any way we could defer this slightly.
I believe Vice Chair Graves has a response.
Yes, and just as trustee Harvey hopes are talking, I pulled up the Committee of the Whole agendas and the April 12 meeting, which is the next one, depending on how long we think budget might last. We only have one other item on that agenda, so there's potentially room there to to have a bit more of an informal discussion on this. So I will touch base with Superintendent Veerman and Director Miller and see if we see if we can't touch some space on that agenda first.
Oh, you have eight seconds. Go ahead.
Wednesday night with the package going out Thursday won't be enough time to change anything if we decide we need to change anything. So perhaps the vote?
Go ahead.
I would suggest then forwarding the suggestions that you plan to bring by email to all trustees in advance.
They're not suggestions, they're... That would probably be problematic in that, I don't know how to explain it, but that's also putting it on back on the director at the time when we don't want to put stuff on the...
I believe there's been a suggestion that we take it to, that we leave it on the board package. It will go to Committee of the Whole next week for some discussion and then come back at the board package, possibly revised depending on our discussion. Well, I guess it depends because maybe not everyone has the same concerns you do. Trustee Collard.
It seems that the length of the discussion may be longer than just a few minutes from what I'm gathering from trustee Harvey Hope's comments. And I'm I'm going to suggest that perhaps what we really need to do is put a copy of this into our drive, share it, and allow for the comments to be made on there so that we can all see what it is that's concerning and add our own thoughts prior to Wednesday so that things might go a little bit more smoothly on Wednesday because we very rapidly run out of time at Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll load up the document to the drive and have it available within the next couple of days. So comments can be made before the Committee of the Whole meeting. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the associate director, was this policy subject to legal review as far as current good practice for a job description in effect of for a director of education?
I'm not aware that there was a legal review, but manager Gortmaker has just told me that it's followed the same template as in other boards.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, this will come back in two weeks after discussion at Committee of the Whole. All right, our next item is information items. And the first item is the Inspire Awards Report. Trustees Gray, Reynolds, and Al Harrison, report 17054 on page 29. And I did refer to this report earlier tonight when I announced the names that that did come and were awarded the Inspire Awards throughout the system this time round. But if one of you'd like to speak to the fact about it being a quarterly report, that'd be great.
Thank you very much through the chair, and I will look to trustees Al Harrison and trustee Reynolds for assistance in this report. This report is really summarizes the activities from the period of last November through till February of this year. In total, there have been eight months of reports that this award has been available in the board. In fact, over the last eight months, there's only been one month during the school year where there were no nominees. And but nevertheless, for that continuance, we have seen many individuals be awarded here at the board. And I want to make a comment, if I could, to the fact that those who do not appear here before the board are often engaged in very meaningful and touching ceremonies back at their schools. And I know that I have the privilege of attending such a ceremony at Joseph Givens next month to honor a very engaged volunteer for that school in front of the entire school body at a very special assembly. So I'm so delighted. And I know that this is happening all over the board with involving all of the trustees in these very, very meaningful moments. But wasn't tonight lovely with all of the individuals that we had in attendance? And it's one of the very special aspects of this award. I might just add that to date, we've had a number of award winners. I think it's 57 award winners and three different community groups. I think it's important to note at this time, and I believe I sent an email to all trustees, that these award winners have encompassed the entire broad area of education. We have had community volunteers, parents, school support workers, teachers, custodians, EAs, CYCs, public health nurses, school administrators, and student, parent, and business groups. And so this very, very inclusive nature about this award is very, very inspiring, to borrow the term. And I think that we should all be very, very proud of this. And I just want to mention again, with the help of trustee Al Harrison and Reynolds, that it was the intent to bring a report monthly to the board. We have so far made this only our second report, and hence that's why the length of the report and the long list of award winners exists at this time. So any of the three of us would welcome any questions at this time regarding this report.
And trustee Al Harrison is on the list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that trustee Grabentz is now the co-chair of Communications Committee, and I'm assuming her name will appear on the report moving forward. And just to speak to your comment about inclusion, and I think that, you know, behind the scenes, the trustee group is also, we're trying to rotate around so that we're building capacity amongst ourselves as well, so that the process piece is is shared around and doesn't just sit with one with one person. And it's been an honor to be involved in this. Thanks.
How inspiring is that? Thank you very much for your report. So our next item is the school greening annual report. And we did see the presentation earlier. Did Superintendent Cullen have anything else to speak to that? Nope. Okay, well then we'll move right along to our extreme weather procedures. Associate Director Bogue, report 17052 on page 33 of your board package. Associate Director Bogue.
Thank you, Chair Anis. Through you two trustees, this report was requested some while ago about extreme weather and our practices in the board with a particular focus around hot weather. In fact, we've captured, I think, both cold and hot weather in the report as well as unusual weather situations pertaining to when kids are outside, out of doors, and physically active, playing sports, those kinds of things. As you can see from the report, we've we've made a suggestion around trying to consolidate an admin procedure, which is the inclement weather admin procedure, and a guideline, which is really around hot weather into one comprehensive admin procedure and sort of elevate that the status of the hot weather guideline because it's not as accessible, I don't think, it's not accessible to the public because it's a staff document, in fact, and trustees have access as well as staff, but it's not on our board website. It's not a formal admin procedure. So our suggestion was to combine two of those admin procedures into one. So we were talking about all weather conditions and how we'll respond, both as a from a staff perspective and for our kids. And leaving the one admin procedure as is, which is really a more around physical activity, and that tends to reside more with our physical and healthy active living people in terms of high winds at soccer games and those kinds of things, outdoor recess as well. So we thought that we might keep that one still separate. But I'm happy to answer questions that trustees may have or receive any suggestions for us moving forward as well.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. I just have a comment. On page 34 of the report, the third bullet point says states, there is a smog alert and higher temperatures. I think it's important to give a reference point and quantify what the higher might be, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll all take that back.
Thank you, trustee Grabentz.
Through you, Chair Anis. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this. And I think your recommendation is a great one. I'm, I know a lot of my older schools are, I was getting a lot of input from parents in those very hot summer, you know, end of June, beginning of the school year times. And I hope that this will allow us to have a consistent response and one that we can communicate to our parents.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for this. It was very informative and well-written. And I look forward to seeing the admin procedure. I particularly like when we can pull information that everybody knows is in, everybody in the school system kind of knows about because it's in a guideline, and we get it into the light of the day in an admin procedure. We've done it with now with our concussion protocol, and this one will be a welcome addition to that. I'm just curious as how we how we might track that it's that it's getting done, or does it, should it be in the pending reports? Or should we note that? Because this is an information report, so it's just like, yes, it's coming, and we'll just wait for it to arrive? Or like, I'm not exactly sure. Or perhaps it, so I'm just curious how how we'll know when it makes its light of day?
Associate Director Bogue.
I think we'd be certainly open to suggestions on that. I was thinking probably in the fall, just because this spring is going to be consumed very quickly. One of the things that was alluded to in the report is we want to vet this through a committee as well, which will be school-based principals primarily, maybe some secretarial staff as well. Because a big piece of this is who makes the call when the temperature reaches the, you know, and how does that get communicated to schools so that they can then implement whatever those appropriate actions are? So we want to make sure we get some input from folks in schools who are sort of primary receivers of the information and are going to implement this. So my suggestion would be in the fall if if that seems reasonable to trustees.
Go ahead. So it's not so much when it's coming, it's it's a question of, and that fall sounds fine with me. But the idea being, should we have it as a please bring us back a report, like something so that we know it's still out there floating around? Like, it won't actually be on the order paper, so it's hard to say, yes, they're working on it because... Go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, Gail just gave me a great suggestion. Why don't we put it on our board schedule for reports to come back in the fall? So you'll see it on them on that schedule.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers to this, thank you very much for your report. So our next item is the rental rates annual report. Superintendent Cullen, report 17050 on page 36 of your board package. Welcome back, Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, as you say, an annual report. Typically, staff review the costs of operating our facilities and then to make them available to the public through a variety of different ways, we increase the rates typically by the cost of either salary or utility costs that direct directly impact the operation of the schools. And in addition to that, we have to calculate what the Ministry of Education provides to us in what they call the Community Use of Schools Grant. So many years ago, they provided a specific dollar amount based on the per pupil enrollment of each school board, a dollar amount to help us reduce the cost to community user groups. Once all of that math is completed, each year, we bring it back to the board for information because we then have to share it with our, I'll say, our partners is probably the best word for our reciprocal agreement. In the Parks and Rec departments, they like to get their rates published at this time of the year to get their brochures out to community groups and let them know what the the costs will be for the upcoming school year. We have to take any questions related to this report. I should highlight in the report, it shows a 2% increase or estimated increase on the operating cost, which will allow us to maintain our current 28% discount of the cost. So once we've calculated the actual cost, the grant from the ministry allows us to reduce that by approximately 28% for the nonprofit community user groups. And then there's a series of other rates that pertain to either commercial or nonprofit groups. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see another comments or questions for you. Trustee Grabentz.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Anis. The rental rates report mentions that over the previous two years, we have had different rental rates than the Halton Catholic District School Board. Have their rates been lower or higher than ours? And have we seen an impact on the number of our rentals?
Thank you for that question. I should have highlighted that. We really tried, and we worked very well with the Catholic Board and a lot of different things. And this would be one of those areas where we've tried to maintain the same rental rate because we do work with the same municipalities. So if a community group comes to a Parks and Rec coordinator for the purposes of using a gym, most of the groups aren't concerned whether it's a public school gym, a Catholic school gym, or a municipal gym. They're just looking for a gym. That would be the, so we've tried to keep it relatively the same for those purposes. The Catholic Board last year ran into some issues with the fact that they aren't receiving the same level of grant because their enrollment is slowing more than ours is. So our growth, I don't know if that's the right way to phrase it, their growth is slowing. How's that? So our growth is actually benefiting us in this regard because we're getting the grant per pupil, not getting the grants with any direct correlation to the volume of rentals. And that's where the disconnect occurs. So our rates and grant have sort of progressed with our enrollment growth. The Catholic Board is seeing a little bit of a pressure point in that area and actually got to the point where they had to adjust their rates last year to try and recover from the position that they were in, which meant their rates were actually lower, sorry, higher than ours, slightly higher than ours. This year, they're higher again, and the gap has started to widen just a little bit. So last year, I would say we had anticipated the potential for a swing towards more rentals of our facility than theirs. We didn't really see it. We kind of looked for it. We didn't see much of a change. However, this is the second year that it's occurring. Groups may now become more, so again, we're kind of anticipating, but we haven't seen a shift at this point in time of any great degree.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair. How do our costs align with those that are that are Parks and Recs of each of the municipalities? So how how what is our alignment for spaces of similar gyms, of similar size, or meeting rooms? What, how are they aligned?
Through the chair, I think for the most part, they're relatively close. There is a slight difference in that we make all of our facilities available to the Parks and Rec group to use as part of their inventory. I would say the trend has been they want to use their facilities first. Otherwise, it gets into a situation, they kind of owe us. So it's in their best interest to use their facilities first. And I would say that the user groups don't really see a difference between those when they're looking at those allocations. In fact, some of them use a municipal gym for part of their time and a school for the other, and it's all kind of kind of rolled in together. The city puts a slight administration cost on top of our fee. So whatever we charge them, they, I think they add a dollar an hour, or at least that's what it was a few years back. I believe it's still the same. That is sort of less their handling fee on top of. So it doesn't make a dramatic difference in from what I've been able to see.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, I remember a year ago, sitting here and advocating on behalf of some volleyball clubs up in the Halton Hills, who were finding that their the price of their rentals were going up to such a degree that they were going to be choosing to take their club outside of our area where they could find facilities that would be less expensive. I wonder, has there ever been across Ontario, an organized effort on behalf of school boards to advocate to the ministry? to advocate to the ministry, the provincial government, that they have a good, hard, long look at the Community Use of Schools Grant and to improving that grant to school boards? I think it's really important that we keep individuals and active in our communities, that we increase participation on behalf of youth and that we make it affordable. And I just would ask the question, has there ever been any sort of promotion of that notion by school boards to make that an issue in the provincial government?
Thank you for that, through the chair, to trustee Gray. Excellent item, excellent topic that has been talked about, I should say, had been talked about. So when the Community Use of Schools Grant first came out, there was lots of conversation about how it should work. After it been up and running for a little while, the ministry actually did initiate, I think in response to a combination of school boards and user groups, I would describe it as a very wide and deep review of the entire issue. I think what they concluded at the end of it was that their model for funding is per pupil. And they really wanted to stay on the per pupil base, although they heard the messaging from lots of the school boards that there's not a real direct correlation between the volume of rentals and the student. There could be a case made that if there's no kids in the area, there's no need for rentals and therefore it probably reduces. If there's lots of kids, there's more need and therefore more rentals. So there may be a correlation, but I would say for the most part, certainly in Halton, we've been able to demonstrate that. It's certainly not the same board to board. So when you look at some of the school boards that have declining enrollment, their their grant rate is dropping rather quickly. And yet, the community groups could be adult in nature, not student, and therefore still a high demand for for the community group. So that certainly has been, and that was the conversation that took place. I'm going to say it was at least five years ago and the ministry hasn't really revisited it since. But they did a very thorough job at that time, certainly when they did that. One of the issues that we run into, which you did raise, was our rates tend to be higher than the surrounding boards, more so because we have a huge volume of activity. We're back to the comment that you made, we really do want to see community groups use the schools. We do see a lot. We have very few vacant gyms most nights of the week. Friday night, for some reason, isn't a popular rental one, but there are some Friday night rentals. For the most part, every night of the week, I would say almost every school that's available is used in in some fashion or another. So it's certainly not deterring the groups from using them. I would say that if they're going elsewhere, it hasn't been noticed in our volume of of activity. We've had the comment raised many times, but the answer is quite simple. It's a mathematical calculation. It's the amount that it costs to operate, less the grant rate. That that's basically what it turns into when there are factors that influence that. So we have run into that question on several cases. Some boards around us have the luxury of being able to really reduce the rates. But I think with their changing enrollment, that also that also shifts. The one thing I should note is we've been fairly cautious in our calculations on making sure that we don't redirect any of the per pupil grants for kids in schools to support this. And I think that's what some of the boards have seen an issue with is once you've offered the rate or set, in our case, the twenty-eight percent discount, if your volume of rentals increased dramatically for some reason, you've already published that twenty-eight percent discount. It's not like it's twenty-eight percent with a cap of whatever the grant is. It's twenty-eight percent across the board. And therefore, you could see that actually exceed the grant rate that comes in. So we've tried to keep it as close as we can. It's a mathematical calculation. And right now, we're projecting about a twenty-six or twenty-seven thousand dollar one-time in-year surplus. That's cutting it pretty close, to be quite honest. But we're comfortable enough that when we've done it in the past, we've got either a buffer from a previous year or the one time is still available to us in this year. So we're comfortable, we're not taking dollars out of the classroom to support the community groups, regardless of how wonderful the work is they do. We still have to protect the kids in the class first and that's what we've done. So I think your point is well-made. It may be time for another review of that particular item with the ministry. And I'm more than, there's actually a provincial committee of our staff, all the board staff, that are sort of like an operating group that have a liaison with the ministry. You'd excellent place to bring that up.
Thank you, trustee Herbie Hope.
Thank you, through you Madam Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Just a couple of questions. I've seen this many times, but when I'm looking at it fresh eyes, are these per hour? The different numbers?
Through the chair, yes, they are.
Okay. And because it doesn't say anywhere on the term. And then in in there, it says municipal municipal reciprocal agreement, the first column. And then the one with the star would be the one after the twenty-eight percent. And then, so I'm curious as to, I also have a question about what MTR blended at the bottom is. But the municipal reciprocal agreement applies to whom? And it doesn't, it isn't clear here. I think I believe it's a certain qualify, you have to qualify for that rate. But here, it looks like if you rent through your municipality, you can get a better deal than renting through being a nonprofit direct. And I'm just curious whether or not that's what that, am I reading this right?
Through the chair, yep, you're absolutely correct. That's the way we structured the arrangement with the municipalities is that if if the groups qualify as one of their groups and the different municipalities have slightly different criteria upon which groups can qualify. So they vet the group as to whether or not they meet what I would describe as sort of the threshold for community. Physical activity is also a high priority and youth was the initial target. Now, it's not limited to those. It's not to say that a seniors group doesn't get it. But the municipalities have a evaluation mechanism that they go through. And I would have to say that their focus is on community-based youth and activity would be their highest priority and more so around the allocation of space. So the rates are the same, but we we've seen situations where six people will get together and decide that they're a volleyball group or a basketball group and want a gym. Whereas there could be another organized group that's got fifty or a hundred people and they say, well, they want that gym. So the the municipality gets to review that allocation process to make sure that those that need it the most or can benefit from it the most are the ones that are at the top of the list. Your comment is absolutely correct about the rates. If they rent through the municipality under the reciprocal agreement, they get the reduced rate. That's that's the vetting mechanism to do that. If they don't come through that mechanism, they get the that cost for the most part, unless they move up the scale, which you can see starts to increase as it goes across to commercial, community, all the rest of those other groups have increased rates for that purpose.
I forgot to freeze. I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
The M MTR?
Terminology that initially came out, it was actually the Ministry of Tourism and Recreation that initiated what became the Community Use of Schools Grant, which now flows through the Ministry of Education. Still generically referred to throughout the user groups as the MTR. So it was the Ministry of Tourism and Rec initially.
Thank you, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair, how are the weekend hourly custodial rates metered out when more than one group books different spaces in the same facility at the same time on the same day?
I love math. So through the chair, what we do with the groups as they're booking and the municipality also does, we tell the group what their upper end or their worst-case scenario be. So in other words, if they were the only group in the school, they are solely responsible to cover all the costs of being there. If, over the course of time, another group were to come in and it's now split by two, it's then three groups that's split by three, that's basically the way it rolls out. That's pretty much managed by the municipality because they are the ones doing that coordination of the booking. And part of what works out well in that regard is we don't see one group in each school costing us much more than if we put all the same groups into the same facility on the same day or potentially even at the same time if there's multiple gyms. So it it really does provide the initiative to say, let's coordinate and get under one roof at one time. And it does does work out for both the groups and and the way we do the billing.
Thank you, trustee Herbie Hope.
So Countant Hattigan, how do we come up with these, the the actual costs? Are we talking about, and we've had this conversation a few times, is it variable cost? Is it the, you know, we had to leave the heat at twenty-two instead of sixteen? We left the light on LED. I mean, like, I'm wondering whether or not how we figure out what our costs are because there's an argument that it's not quite the same as a cold building that needs to be heated up to a certain temperature if you're renting at night.
Through the chair, the mechanism we're using right now is through business services. We have a couple of staff, as you know, assigned to monitor the the facility's finances. One of those staff annually reviews the all of the costs related to operating the buildings. That's the determination. So it's not done as an incremental difference. It's done as the actual cost of operating the space. So back to your question, not from cold, but actually from the current temperature that it may be at. It's actually calculated on additional hours of operation of the facility at the the net rate of all of the features that go into it. So whether it's vandalism, utilities, custodial, all of those items are factored in and then worked out to a per square foot operating cost of the school.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions at this time, I'd like to thank you very much for your report, Superintendent Cullen. The next item is capital update. Superintendent Cullen, report one seven zero five three, page thirty-eight on this board package. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought I was getting a break there. This report is, I think, in the the similar format that trustees are familiar with and has all of our current projects that are underway. Happy to take any questions related to anything that is on the list as usual. But I will note that I attended Martin Street today and it really starts to look like a school. So for anybody that's been by, we retained the original facade, which you'll remember the the conversation about the front of the building, which was now the library. It's the actual east wall of the entire library surface of the building. But I would say that work is progressing very well inside the building, much more so than outside. So now that it's spring and the weather is good, we'll get at the outside, but it's moving along quite nicely. Actually, I may have some pictures for our next update for you.
Well, that's great. Any drone shots?
The drones have been somewhat limited by some of the regulations. So they the drone footage may be limited in the future. We'll we'll see what we can do.
Trustee Gerbence.
Thank you, Chair Ennis, to Superintendent Cullen. Georgetown District High School additions and renos. I noticed that it says still need to work out land deal with Halton Catholic District's school board to receive final sign-off. What does this mean and what if this is not attainable?
Thank you for that, through the chair, to trustee Gerbence. The issue is, it relates back to the addition, fairly significant addition and renovation we did at Georgetown High School when we put the food school in place. The Field of Dreams, artificial turf, all of those changes to the site increased the water runoff from the site, hard surfaces for parking and whatnot, and therefore the water has to drain off the site. If you're familiar with the layout of the territory, there's quite a large ravine behind the school, which is really a good thing because it's really easy to get water into a ravine and it goes away. The problem is it's owned by the Catholic Board. And when we talked to our co-terminist board, they were, they had no concerns over us actually constructing a fairly elaborate drainage swale through there out of concrete and rock and whatnot to prevent erosion and to get the water off the site. And when we went ahead and built that on that approval, the town said, well, it needs to be more than just a handshake between the two. Something has to be documented here. Something has to be either in the form of an easement or some longstanding official property issue. When we raised that with the Catholic Board at a later point in time, they suggested that we should just buy the ravine. And we weren't really too keen on purchasing the ravine. So the conversation came to a grinding halt and the town has said, well, they can't sign off until that's done. It's gone round, round. So I believe at this point in time, Mr. Renzella has been dealing with another variation of an easement or something with the Catholic Board or that the town will accept the current approved permission, if you will, as as sufficient authority to sign it up. But we've maintained it on here because technically there are still fees and funds sitting with the town until that is all completely signed off. So that's why it sits there. So our job was to get it built. Now we have to do the paperwork behind the scenes and it's it's been worked on for quite. I I think we should be fairly close to getting this one off the books shortly. It's been there for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Collard.
Thank you. I think this is the first time I've ever seen the demolition of portables on a capital update. And I'm wondering how long the portables have been there, how long they've been unused and how often demolition of portables is required.
Through the chair, to trustee Collard, you're right, it's probably one of the few times we've actually listed because it's a bit of a group of them. So we've had individual portables in the past that will reach a point where, just probably two phases to a portable's existence. One is it can't be moved anymore. So it's still fine to use where it is. But if you were to pick it up and try and drive down the highway, it may not make it. So structurally, that one would then be left at that site until such time as we no longer really need it. In some cases, we'll let it sit there for schools to use for storage. It it may carry on in that fashion. The ones in particular that are mentioned here have not been in use for quite some time. They've been sitting at that same site, can't be moved, haven't really been occupied to any great degree. I think one was was the only thing being used for storage at this point. So we'd been asked several times, could we get them out of there and kind of clean up the site, give the kids some more more room to play? And it because of the number involved, it was a fairly sizable project and we we did put it out as one project. In fact, I think they're they're all gone now, happened over the March break. And yeah, I would say, how often does it happen? Not that frequent. We've got portables that date back to the seventies and eighties that have been refurbished and can stay in business for quite some time or in use, rather. But in some cases, we no longer need them. They're they're stuck at that site and it's just the simplest thing to do is is take them out of there.
May I follow up? At what cost do we demolish them? And just as a comment, I'm sure that the families that live around the property are pleased to see them gone.
Through the chair, I would have to check what the cost, I don't recall what it was specifically, but I'd rather not guess. I'll check it and get your number.
Thank you, trustee Herbie Hope.
I'm glad to see that Northeast Oakville Number Two's design is getting off the ground because I drove by there quite a couple of times in the last few days. And I'm a little worried that those little bodies are going to be there in sooner than we expected because there are whole townhouse complexes that the last time I went grocery shopping weren't there and now they are. So it's it's getting kind of scary driving along Dundas and and they're down, up and down Trafalgar. So good to see that we're getting along the way. But I wanted to ask, and just because we're sort of in capital update, where are we getting anywhere on starting that one?
Just through the chair, to trustee Herbie Hope, I I share the same concern as you do, although I don't grocery shop there. I've driven past it once or twice and that neighborhood is growing rapidly. This is the school that was not approved. So just to remind the board, we got the Milton Elementary, the Milton Secondary. We did not get the Northeast Oakville School. So if you do the math very quickly, this may not be approved officially until next fall, which would start officially the design time, followed by the construction time. There's a lot of grocery shopping trips between here and there and there's going to be a lot of houses. So yes, I think there is a potential concern that we may have to raise at some point.
Follow-up?
Go ahead. So I presume that what we're trying to possibly do is be as ready as we can so we can squeeze it in if we need to. And also, may I request that the next time we, whenever that LTAP conversation comes up, that we make sure that we highlight that one for what we're going to do because that neighborhood south of there is the one that doesn't have enough room in the first place. It's not like we have any room other than maybe asking an empty farmer's field to put some portables up in the meantime.
Just so you know, it's very much on my radar and I've already had a conversation with Mr. Renzella about potentially having to do a boundary review up there with the Trafalgar split and where we're going to direct kids to. So I'm sure that will come out in the LTAP discussions. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, through the chair, to Superintendent Cullen. I'm also very happy to see that the portables have been removed from Sir Ernest McMillan. I do have to admit, though, they are kind of tucked away and I walk my dog by there all the time and I haven't noticed yet that they're gone. So. But I do have a question and it might be a bit of a political issue about other portables, porta-packs in that area, another school.
There is another location in that. There is another location in that general area that does have a porta pack that is not being used right now that we have not taken action with just yet. We thought we'd do these ones first.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I'd like to thank you very much for your update. Superintendent Cullen. So we're now up to the board report update. Associate Director Boog, report 17049 on page 40 of your board package.
Thanks, Madam Chair. There's just a few dates and things that are highlighted and bold for trustees. A couple that may still be in flux a little bit. The Learning Center's report was scheduled for tonight, but because Mr. Superintendent Zongville wasn't able to be here, that one's been shifted to the April 19th. The LTAP, I just looked over my shoulder to see if we know when in May that's that one got shifted in May, I think as a result of the discussion at committee of the whole. And just looking at the budget date, I'm looking at Superintendent Veerman as well. I'm wondering whether that one should have been bolded as well. Is that is that it? Should that be a change, Superintendent Veerman?
Through the chair, I believe at the last meeting there was discussion about a possibility of a board meeting, May 31st. And that was to discuss budget and LTAP also.
So we'll get both of those then changed for the for the next version. Thank you for that.
Are there any comments or questions for the associate director? Seeing none, we will now move on to. We're getting it easy tonight. The committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the next SEAC meeting will be changed. It will be moved to Tuesday, April 11th and will be at Garth Webb High School, 2820 West Oak Trail.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison. Okay, what happened to you? Vice Chair Graves.
The next committee of the whole meeting is on April 12th. As mentioned earlier, there's a budget component to it. We're also seeing what it's like in a day in the life of a principal and potentially the the director's job description, executive limitations, policy for some informal discussion.
Thank you. Trustee Gervens.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I attended on behalf of trustee Pappen the multi-year. Sorry, the accessibility coordinating committee meeting. And we worked on the multi-year accessibility plan for 2017, 2020. It was quite an interesting discussion and I'm sure trustee Pappen will be attending in the future.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two committees to report on. Firstly, today, as well as last month, I attended the SAL meeting, which stands for Supervised Alternative Learning. That's chaired by Karen O'Brien, the re-engagement coordinator for the board, and Regan Heffernan, system principal. There is a new community member involved from the center as well as a number of social workers and others. And SAL is really represents the tip of the pyramid of interventions that we have at the board. It's a bridge for students who are having a challenge in the here and now to ensure ongoing communication and contact and engagement for their for their future. So while they speak another language at that table, I was really trying to understand and what I did discern is just the critical and fantastic work that is being done for these students. And I would like to suggest that Karen and Regan share information about the program, the data that they're starting to collect with the committee of the whole in October-ish, in the fall, if that's possible. So that's committee number one. Committee number two, environmental management team, met yesterday. And just a few updates. First Bike to School Week is coming in May. So if you can talk that up with your schools, that would be fantastic. The ECO Schools certification process is ongoing. And while we have slightly fewer than last year, it's still a very robust program. I wanted to let you know about a very exciting partnership between HDSB, an organization called Farmbot, and some senior centers. There's two or three being set up in the board. One, a partnership between Bateman and a senior center. And secondly, between Acton with their agricultural schism and a senior center. So this is a CNC machine that helps to set up and manage an agricultural plot. So the students are building this technology with the seniors and maintaining it in an ongoing way. And then the community is reaping the benefit of the vegetable plot that is farm. So if you check out Farmbot, if you just Google it, you can see this really very cool cool technology. And lastly, a number of dance-a-thons are taking place again. And from an environmental perspective, I just wanted to throw out a pick challenge again that there's a lot of one of the caretakers who's on that committee brought in a large garbage bag full just to show the kinds of things that are tossed aside. These are often incentives and just like to challenge our communities to perhaps utilize some different types of incentives in there in the good work that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Danielle.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind trustees that this weekend on Saturday morning is the Oxford Central West Regional Meeting. I don't know who is attending, but doors open at 8:30 for coffee and generally treats. And then the meeting runs from 9:00 to 12:00 and there is a lunch afterwards. So I look forward to seeing you there as well. Save the date for April 29th. Central West Region had requested a workshop on mental health and we are working on planning that. It will be hosted by upper grants, so probably in the Gulf area. And when I have details, I will let you know.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much through the chair. I just wanted to remind all trustees that you are always welcome to come to the audit committee meeting. We meet, yes, several of you have come and you're always welcome. It's going to be held next week, Thursday, on the 13th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So please plan to attend if you can.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair. Last week, trustee Harvey Hope and I attended the meeting of the Mental Health Steering Committee. At that meeting, we talked about a number of staff, school and student focused initiatives and approved a number of them to go forward. There is also a professional development conference on on Friday, Building Our Foundation: Safety and Wellbeing. And there was discussion about the need to develop now a new three-year plan for for 2017 to 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. The SEAC meeting for this month has been moved to April 11th. Oh, sorry.
It's good to be reminded twice, though. Thank you. Okay.
Can I say something?
No. Go ahead.
What I do want to say, though, is I know that there's a lot of events that evening and not a lot of the trustees will be able to make it. Are you able to go, trustee? You are going. Okay.
I I thank you for sharing that. Yeah, we we oh, super. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're up to the director's report. Associate Director Boog.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I have a number of items here for trustees, some some good news items. I just want to acknowledge EJ James. They received the EQAO Betty Stevenson, Dr. Betty Stevenson Recognition of Achievement Award for effectively using EQAO data for student success essentially. So the school gets invited to a one-day workshop and a luncheon and will some folks from the school will be able to receive that award. So that's a great, great work for for our folks at EJ James. Trustees had mentioned that they would be quite interested in understanding some of the events and other activities that are happening around the board. So we're trying to put together a little bit of a calendar for you to take you through the spring. I just want to acknowledge that there are we'll try to get a hold of whatever board events are happening. We can get those. We don't always know of the school-based events and so sometimes we do have some conflicts based on that. So we'll gather as much as we can from a board perspective and try to get it into one place for you so that you can attend those events that you're interested in attending.
This was following a request from me actually because I've been invited to multiple events on the same date and I can't split myself. And Vice Chair Graves is also covering one of those events and there's still other events that needed to be covered. So we we've asked if there could be a system calendar that trustees would have have a be able to look at for the future so they could be doing planning. So that's where this comes from. Do you want to? Trustee Harvey Hope.
So just to clarify, we used to have a system calendar on the old website. I mean, like a it was it was a different format than it is now. And we have a trustee calendar that we would be happy to let someone help administer it that would that is what I used to figure out what's happening. So perhaps we could do some coordinating here. I mean, we can layer over calendars, but I know I had requested that the old HDSB system calendar, which now is a layer on the Google trustee calendar, get updated. So like, I just want to make sure that we don't end up solving one problem and creating another one for Andre and I, who are usually the ones updating the calendar.
We that's a great suggestion and we will for this spring, we're just going to get to give you a list essentially of what's happening. But we are going to look at that. There's about four or five different Google HDSB calendars. Some are perhaps maybe need to be removed. There were things on different ones. So we need to determine a system, not only for trustees, but for folks in the system, too, to understand what those big events are that are out there. So we'll we'll work on that. I agree, we lost a little something, I think, with chat that we haven't quite figured out yet. So we'll put that on on our list to have a look at. On the topic of calendar, I just want to acknowledge for folks in the public that on April 21st, the Burlington Par report will be become public to the public and available on our website prior to landing on the committee of the whole agenda the following week. Some other good news. I was I attended the Bay Area Science and Engineering Fair last night in Hamilton. It was at Mohawk College. This is a fairly big deal. It draws students in doing science and engineering, mathematics, kinds of projects from both Hamilton boards, both Halton Public and Catholic boards, variety of private schools and some schools from Grand Erie as well. And just nice to say that Halton did very, very well. So I just want to acknowledge some of the schools. I won't go through all the names, but I know this went out. Some of this was in the in the paper and we can certainly share the details with trustees. But just so that you get a sense, best overall award in the in the entire fair, and I think there was over 500 or 600 different projects there, was Emily Carr. And in fact, it was a grade seven student, absolute best overall. Second place was a Garth Webb student. They happened to be brother and sister. And they also won the best high school award and the best junior award. From that fair, they also send five students, five projects onto Los Angeles for the International Science and Engineering Fair. And two of those five are Garth Webb's, two different projects from Garth Webb. So that's pretty good, two out of five. From the project, they also send 16 projects to the Canada-wide science fair and five of those projects are Halton District School Board. So we have two from Maple Grove, two from M.M. Robinson and Emily Carr. So it was just a really outstanding night. We talk a lot about STEM and the importance of math, science, technology, those kinds of things. And and our kids did exceptionally well. A few other quick updates for you. I'm just going to look over to Superintendent Hunt-Givens to talk a little bit just about skills that took place just a while back and to give you a brief update on OSSLT as well.
I just wanted to thank all of you for your support of the Halton Skills Olympics. It is a huge event. There are over 1,000 students who attend that event and we couldn't make it work without the staff and trustee support that we get as judges, as runners, as everything that everybody does. It's so to all of the superintendents in the room who freed their staff up that they could attend that day and to our trustees who were there and participated, thank you. I did share the individual results with you so you could see how the schools you represent did. I just wanted to give you the update that some of the competitions had to do qualifiers prior to the Ontario Championships. And the qualifiers were on April 1st in six of the areas and they were 2D character animation, carpentry, individual culinary, small-powered equipment, TV and video production and welding. And we are sending students in all of those areas to the Halton or sorry, the Ontario Skills Competition, May 1st through 3rd at the Toronto Congress Center, as well as some of the other students who didn't have to do that qualifier. So all in all, we had a phenomenal showing by our students. And thank you again to all of you for supporting that. And I did just want to make a bit of a shout out that the Ontario Literacy Test was very non-eventful. You didn't hear anything about it because there was nothing to hear. It was a regular Ontario secondary school literacy test in all of our schools. It went off without a hitch and we'll share those results when we get them. So thank you.
Superintendent Hunt-Givens, was that secondary the list of qualifiers that are going to Ontario or elementary or both?
And just one last item. I'm going to just look over to Superintendent Padrae Barrett to talk about an upcoming event.
Thank you, trustees. We've provided you just an invite to our annual Give Respect, Get Respect Gala. It's as noted on the on the flyer, it's April 25th. We have entries in five of six categories. Kids enter this because they want to. It's not it's nothing we certainly it's not assigned or forced in any way. So we get a variety of from-the-heart entries and you're welcome to attend. Free popcorn as well. And if if you're able to join, I don't know. I know many of you have have been in the past and it wouldn't be a four-hour commitment, but if you could even pop in, you'll you'll get the gist of it. They share why it's at the cinema is because they'll share big visually what the posters are or the video entries. So it's it's really great. It's in conjunction with Halton Catholic and it's really the Halton Regional Police Services that are the the lead organizers of it. It's a great event.
And that's all for me, Chair Amos.
I'd also like to echo the fact that this is the Give Respect, Get Respect is amazing that the entries are just blow your mind. I mean, we have them from all the way from any of the elementary or secondary schools to including Silt Apps. And some of the the things that they produce are just amazing. It is really worth going to if you have the time. Okay, thank you for your report. Is there any questions or comments for Associate Director Boog? Seeing none, we've now moved on to communications from the chair. Well, I was going to talk about the skills competition, but I would like to say that I know a number of us helped out or judged at the competition. And it is one of the highlights of the year, seeing all these students working together, collaborating, solving problems and just their problem-solving abilities that they use. And I wish we could get more of our schools involved in them. When I looked at the list, there are quite a number, but I would love to see all of our schools involved. And I don't know how do we make that happen? Superintendent Hunt-Givens, do you know how we can make that happen?
I I smirked a little, Chair Amos, because we already had over 1,000 students there and it it gets quite crowded in places. And we did have very good representation. And in fact, I can tell you that our IPL and our tech team in the area did reach out to schools. did reach out to schools where we did not have representation, even on the day of, to sort of put a little bit of pressure to say, "Hey, this is a great day. Why don't you have kids in this area?" So, pressure and support, and maybe a bigger location.
Well, I'm not saying you can go much bigger.
No, I know.
You were at one of the biggest. But thank you for doing that, because it is... I think, again, I'm going to keep blowing this horn, but we need to have family studies and technology in grade seven and eight and give those kids that exposure and some of those skills so that they know that they're available and they can compete in these kind of things. And then when they get to high school, they have options because they already know what they exist. So, I'm going to keep blowing my horn until it happens. Anyways, I would like to thank everybody involved for making it such a great day, because it was a great day, and I always look forward to it every year. I don't have a lot else to report, other than the fact that I will be circulating shortly a letter from the ministry regarding Education Week, which is the first week of May. I just received it in my mailbox. But going through it quickly, I see that part of the... The week is going to be about celebrating Ontario's 150, as well as Canada 150, and they're throwing out a challenge to all schools. And I would think I'd like to throw up this challenge to the trustees and the superintendents. They're profiling creative performances of a place to stand on social media. So, I'm going to suggest that we make a version of this song, and we share it with our system and with the government, because I think that we should lead by example. So, I'm throwing this challenge out, and we'll have to do it sometime this month, because I believe it has to be out before Education Week. But anyways, I think we should try and do this. It's a place to stand. You're in? Good. Place to grow. See, everybody already knows the song. So, even if we each sing a line, we can somehow do it, maybe in front of all our different schools or something. You know, like, there's a way to do it, so we'll investigate. Even if you can't sing, you can talk. So, anyways, I'm throwing that challenge out. That's all I have. So, now we're up to trustee questions and comments. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. Actually, I want to respond to your challenge. At the February supercouncil meeting, there was a parent who actually asked whether Halton District School Board was doing something to celebrate Canada's 150th. And we're chatting a little bit about what that could be, and one suggestion was maybe creating a song. When you think of all the wonderful bands in our system and musicians, certainly, that would be something that I think the students might be interested in, as well as their teachers. It wouldn't be in time for the Education Week, but perhaps we could put it on the radar for the system to consider and bring different schools together. So, it doesn't have to be school-based, but more of a system-based, and go forward as kind of our legacy, HDSB legacy for the 150th birthday of our country. Okay, and what I wanted to provide an update on was, on Monday, I attended the Raise the Flag for Autism event at the Oakville Town Hall, along with Oakville's mayor and councillors and Halton Regional Police, Autism Ontario, Chair CAC... Sorry, Chair of CAC Denise Nassif, and a number of families with children of varying ages. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. A few quick things. I want to wish Leah Reynolds as trustee rep and the centre best of luck tomorrow night at the Burlington Achievement Awards. They're up against hard competition from the Halton Learning Foundation. And so, we look forward to one of the two, if not the two, receiving due honours tomorrow night at the Burlington Award Gala. I'd like to, secondly, I want to put it out there, shout-out to the folks at White Oaks. Any principal or staff that would take on doing something as large as the Halton Skills and arranging the day and the learning of all the students onsite to be able to accommodate such a powerful experience for so many people and to welcome so many people from the community, parents, students, competitors, and then all the rest of us who were there to either watch or judge. That's an amazing feat. And sometimes, we certainly want to recognize the organizers of this event, but a real shout-out to White Oaks for taking that on and making it so seamless and so welcoming. It was a great day for all. And I want to thank Superintendent Hunt Givens for sharing the results. I think that that was very, very helpful for me in learning more about the involvement and the success of the students and schools in the Hills. Finally, I would like to say, and I'm not sure that it's been mentioned yet, but also Superintendent Hunt Givens gave us some information about this weekend in Hamilton at McMaster University. I believe it's the robotics, one of the regional robotics championships or competitions. And we want to wish all of our students well. I was very pleased to see, of course, some representation from Halton Hills in that competition. And lastly, I do have a question for Superintendent Hunt Givens. Just a little bit of an interest that I have in the OSSLT. How did it go? And so on.
Through the chair to trustee Gray. Gray, can I start out by letting you know that Halton Skills Olympics is in Georgetown in your area next year? So, that is the passing of the torch, and we can all plan accordingly to be there. Trustees, you do have in your mailboxes information on the robotics. We have 10 teams. All of our teams will be competing at McMaster University this weekend. My email does indicate that if you want to get the greatest bang for your buck to go on Sunday afternoon, there will be updates provided to you in terms of how the teams are doing. But if you haven't seen it in action, it is a wonderful opportunity. And finally, our literacy test. No joking at all. It was uneventful in the best possible way. Students wrote the test. I heard one story about a pair of broken glasses and somebody who had to have their mom come to the rescue with an extra pair. But largely, it went the way we want all of our literacy tests to go, and that is without any issues whatsoever. So, it took a great deal of stress off students and staff alike.
Thank you. Trustee Mitch Polanski.
Thank you. I have a question. So, I know that the Ministry of Education has just released that they plan to implement financial literacy in the Grade 10 Careers Programme, which I think is fantastic. I know that they have also mentioned that they want to do pilot programmes in some boards or in some schools. I'm just wondering if we have more information about what's happening in Halton, if there's a timeline for this?
Superintendent Hunt Givens.
Through the chair to our student trustee. Yes, we do have... That information is out. We actually have pilot projects running in our own careers, and we have the opportunity for various schools are opting in to do certain units or to do careers in a different way. So, you'll be hearing more about that as we have some feedback collected from those who are participating in some of these new pilots and a new approach.
Thank you. Trustee Paffin.
Thank you. I have three things to mention. Leicester View Pearson and Sir Ernest Macmillan Schools are organizing a parent night on April 12th, where the two school councils are partnering to host an information night with the Toronto Argonauts, the Halton Police, and their school administration staff to discuss the impact of bullying on students. The Toronto Argonauts have been working with both schools since November, with about 10 student leaders at both schools to be change agents at their respected schools and how they can deliver the message to the student body that bullying is not cool. The Argos and cheerleaders will be coming to both schools on April 12th, during the day, which is International Day of Pink, to deliver a powerful message about how bullying affects them and how it can change their lives. Then the Argonauts will be the keynote speakers in the evening for the parent event. And the provincial government is hosting an Ontario Community Hub Summit in Toronto from May 1st to May 13th. The summit represents an opportunity for individuals across the province to be involved with community hubs and to connect and exchange ideas and expertise. The agenda is still being finalized and will be shared in advance of the summit. And last week, I had the pleasure of attending the National School Board Association Conference in Denver. I highly recommend every trustee attend at least once in their career. I am working on my notes, and we'll get them out to you this weekend. But I will say that speakers were excellent. My favorite was Wes Moore, an author, entrepreneur, who spoke on the principle to do what is right and not what is always popular. The sessions were very informative. Two sessions I really enjoyed, actually three, were the Internet Security, Digital Learning, and The Power of One. So, as I say, it was an excellent conference. I did learn that we are doing a lot of great things here in Halton, and the networking was really uplifting in these very challenging times for public education. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the Oakville-Trafalgar Reach Team for their win at the Halton Championships, hot off the press in their Twitter feed. Also, wanted to give everybody a heads-up. The Oakville-Trafalgar does a bi-annual, every-other-year Relay for Life event at the end of May. The whole town, end of the town revolves around it that weekend. So, I will be potentially asking for support for my 12-hour walk overnight. And also, wanted to say... Wondered about... Tomorrow is the beginning of the Labor Relations Conference. And was just curious, as perhaps those of you that are attending might give me a heads-up for possible outside events and who's going to be there and when, and all that coordinating that we do. Unfortunately, that means I will not be able to attend the Mental Health Day on the Friday. Again, one of those problems with the system calendar/keeping track of everything is one cannot keep up this time of year. For instance, the ClearView Cleanup, which the schools get heavily involved in, would conflict with the OPSPA, the Central West thing at the end of April. So, again, just to acknowledge that those of us that get invited to events, thank you very much for all of the invitations. Often, we can't get to them all, but we do try. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. If I may, could I have a question of Associate Director Bogue? And it's with his report about the EJ James receiving the Beth Stevenson Award. I think that's a fabulous item to bring forward, and congratulations to the teachers and administrators at EJ James. When we have such a stellar, outstanding school such as that receive such an award, I wonder how the system shares the work of those teachers and how the system gets that information through to all of the other schools so that they may learn from the best practices that obviously are taking place in that school.
Thanks for that question, trustee Gray. I'm going to look to Superintendent Hunt Givens, because I think what applies here in elementary applies equally in secondary. And we've got lots of schools that do lots of things really well. And when we learn about those really effective practices, how do we share them, I think, is what the question is. So, Superintendent Hunt Givens, do you have some comments?
One of the ways that we share our best practices is through our tradition here in Halton of our April 28th PA Day, which is a subject-specific PA Day. And it is run for subjects by subjects, and it is a best practices day, a lot of it. This year, we're focusing as well on equity and inclusion as part of every single day. But that is one day where people get together and are able to cross-pollinate. We also run a series of opportunities through the program department where people can come together. Just yesterday, I went to the finale for Change Agents, which was a group of department heads across the system who get together in a series of... I think there were five of them all together, and they explore best practices in departmental leadership across the system. And so, there's a variety of different opportunities, whether they're for teachers, for leaders. And all of the subject associations each have their own budget, run through our instructional program leads who bring them together, again, for the purpose of doing that, and that includes release time as well. And then, of course, our focus on co-plan, co-teach. And Superintendent Newton and I have also got together and facilitated an innovation and program piece where we were able to put together some money in our budgets together, and teachers could get release time to talk to other people and do a little bit of innovation within their work. So, perhaps they wanted to go visit another school where they heard about something that was unique and that was occurring there. That type of thing. Our federation also supports that. They have their own bank account, teachers helping teachers. So, there's all sorts of opportunities and a variety of ways to meet the different needs and sizes of that.
Go ahead, Associate Director Bogue.
And I just learned as well, just on that note around the success of EJ James, there is a story, I guess, that's on our board website as well. That's been tweeted and posted, so that's great news.
Thank you. And I have one other item, in case anyone's interested. Tomorrow at White Oaks, they're showing a film called Race to Nowhere. And I don't know... It's about... It's a film that calls us to challenge current thinking about how we prepare our children for success. It's rated as one of the 10 education documentaries you don't want to miss because it brings communities together to spark dialogue and galvanize change in American schools. So, it's about heartbreaking stories of students across the country who have been pushed to the brink by overscheduling, over-testing, and the relentless pressure to achieve. So, it's a silent epidemic in our system, or in our schools. So, anyways, if anybody's interested, let me know, and I'll forward you the information. But it is showing tomorrow at White Oaks. I see no further speakers, so could I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Daniele. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.